Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee the whole day. Today is Monday, May 5th, 2025. It's 5 o'clock PM. Welcome. Thank you all for being here. We do have some consent agenda items to take up. We'll start with Consent K. And for that, we welcome our Public Works Director, Brian Schmidt. Brian, we've got some increase in prices and newer trucks and supply chain issues continue. You have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've been talking about this through the last couple of budget cycles, but on May 3rd of 2022, City Council authorized the purchase of three single axle plow trucks. And then on June 6th of 2023, City Council authorized the purchase of two single axle and two tandem axle trucks. These trucks were purchased through Ascendence Trucks of Eastern Iowa, which was formerly known as Thompson Truck and Trailer, through the Sourcewell contract, which is a cooperative purchasing agreement for public entities. Sourcewell pricing for these chassis are discounted at 31% off of the MSRP and subject to change based on the build year that we would actually receive them. Due to shortages in raw material, labor, federal emissions standard changes to the diesel engines, and a national shortage of the Allison transmissions, we were informed by the supplier that we would see significant delays in receiving these trucks coming out of COVID. By obtaining these purchase orders encumbering the money back in 2022 and 2023, this allowed the city to be placed on the higher in the queue on the manufacturer's build list. The international chassis are currently being built and will be completed soon. All seven of these chassis will be model year 2026. We will be receiving the 31% off of the MSRP through Sourcewell, but unfortunately, there has been some significant increases due to inflation, the cost of steel, labor, and federal emission standards that are now required on all these diesel engines. I've kept our finance department informed periodically over the past several years of these changes as we've been working with the manufacturers on these. And we do have funding available in our reserves in the Road Use and Vehicle Replacement Fund accounts to cover these cost increases. It's important to note that once these chassis are built, they're going to be sent to Henderson Products up in Manchester, Iowa. Then that will then outfit them with a new front plow, mid plow, spreader boxes, and the pre-wetting system that is required on all of our plow trucks. As of this morning, we've been informed by Henderson that they will not be increasing any of their costs, which is amazing for us considering the fact that we purchased these back in '22 and '23, that they are not increasing the cost of their equipment. It's only the international chassis that incurred a cost increase on that. I provided you a detailed sheet in front of you at your chairs tonight that shows you detail of what, when we were originally going to receive the chassis and then the differences in the cost and the amendments to the POs that we would be looking at. Staff is seeking council approval to amend our existing POs to update our snowplow fleet. And then I'll answer any questions if you have them.
Questions for Brian? Greg Adamson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just out of curiosity, Brian, when I saw the item that said chassis, I guess that threw me. Is that like a term that's used for trucks or?
Yeah, that's actually the cab and the frame of the truck and the wheels and everything. That's considered the chassis. And then it's outfitted with the actual body itself, the spreader box. Or in the case of a garbage truck, it's actually the packer and everything that would mount onto the back of, to the frame of the truck.
Okay, so that's just a common term that they use in your business? And then have we already paid something toward this to hold them?
We have not.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Further questions, Greg J?
Thank you, Your Honor. This is really for Jason. I'm trying to understand the funding mechanism for this. The council's asked to spend an extra $93,000, $94,000. That's not otherwise budgeted. Where does that money come from? And then can you talk for just a second about the vehicle replacement funds? Where do those funds in general come from?
Sure. To answer your first question, this is a, we've kind of anticipated these price increases for a couple of years, really. And we did anticipate them in the reestimate budget back in the January, February timeframe. So we talked through that then, and they are reflected in the amended budget, which we will have a public hearing for in two weeks. As far as the funding for this, these particular purchases, it is a mix between the Road Use Fund and the Vehicle Replacement Fund. There's pretty ample reserves in the Road Use Fund, mainly because of the delays in our equipment purchases over the last few years. Money that we have set aside for equipment purchases is still sitting in the fund because of these delays. So the, the cost of this increase will be shared by the Road Use Fund, which has reserves to cover it, and the Vehicle Replacement Fund. The second part of your question, the Vehicle Replacement Fund, we are seeing that that fund balance kind of dwindle as costs of these vehicles continues to rise. The main funding source for that fund is our sales tax revenue. By referendum, 40% of sales tax revenue each year goes to capital purchases, be that capital projects like parks, playgrounds, or capital equipment like plow trucks and, and police cars. So that's the main funding source. We do have some minor revenue in that fund from things like interest in sales of vehicles. But for the most part, sales tax is the, is the driver of the Vehicle Replacement Fund. And it's continuing to be challenging to, to meet these, these increases in costs going forward, yes.
What's the dollar threshold for determining a capital vehicle replacement versus just an operational cost replacement?
It typically varies by the type of equipment you're talking about, but generally, anything over $5,000 is a capital equipment type of cost. In the area of projects, we would go up to about $25,000 for like an infrastructure asset.
I was talking to the administrator before the meeting, asking about the golf course. We had just purchased a couple of mowers a couple of months back. Would those be capital equipment purchases as opposed to operational? They're not, they're not funded out of the operational revenues of the golf course. They're funded out of sales tax or interest or other general fund sources, but not necessarily the enterprise itself.
That's exactly right.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. No other questions.
Frank?
Thank you, Your Honor. Brian, is there any possibility that we're locked into this price since they're not going to be delivered until December?
That is correct. We are locked into this price. And then also on the spreadsheet that I provided you, if you look at the, the second block back in February of this year, we did purchase one single axle truck that was on the schedule to be, to be done. That same price of that chassis is still on track. It'll be actually included with this package. So the seven that I am asking for a price increase on these two existing POs, we are actually going to be getting in December eight plow trucks in total. That price remains the same. One of the things too, that you can see on that spreadsheet as well, to outfit a brand new plow truck from Henderson, that price that was quoted to us in February was $168,734 to outfit it. As you can see, which I said that Henderson honored their prices back in '22 and '23, those plow trucks out, totally outfitted, were $130,000 and change. Or, and in one case, it was $158,000. So they could have increased their costs, but they did not. So thankfully for that, we don't see that price increase over and above the prices that I'm asking you to amend this PO.
Other questions? Yep, back to Greg Adamson?
Sorry, Your Honor, just one more quick one. Brian, when, when you retire the older trucks, does that, and I assume we sell them to somebody, does that go back into vehicle replacement?
It does.
He's nodding yes.
Yes, okay.
Yep, he said it does. Zach, have you had something?
He can't nod at me.
Your Honor, just, Brian, perhaps you can, or Jason, enlighten us roughly what prices for these trucks were pre-COVID versus what they are today?
I can add some to that. Years ago, and this is probably before we went to stainless steel boxes, but you could get these trucks fully outfitted for under $100,000. If I'm not mistaken, Brian, I think they were $95,000.
That was just actually for the chassis. So basically, if you could see the cost, when we purchased, got the PO originally back in '22, the chassis was $92,000 for a single axle. Back in 2000, if I recall, they were somewhere around the $85,000, $86,000 range, but I can verify that for you by tomorrow night.
But there's been a significant since COVID in that five-year gap. Almost, I don't want to say double, but I would say?
60, 70% is what we're seeing. And one of the big things is the federal regulations on the emissions for these diesel engines are pretty stringent. So the cost of having all these, what they call DEF, is diesel exhaust fluid that actually goes into these things. And the emissions required for those to eliminate greenhouse gases and things of that nature puts a big toll on the cost of these vehicles.
Any other questions? All right, and I'd like to entertain a motion that we take this up on consent. Tomorrow is Consent K.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Let's move to Consent L. And for that, we welcome our Community Development Director, Mark Hunt. Mark, you have the floor.
Thanks, Your Honor. Appreciate that. Case 25013 is a preliminary plat for Ridge Haven subdivision. Again, a preliminary plat, so we're just getting a first look of what the subdivision might look like. This case did have a recent rezoning where it was prior agricultural land that was rezoned to R2 back in 2024. I'm sure you remember that case. Pheasant's Creek Estates is the Sights family, commonly known developer around here. 27 lot residential subdivision is what we're looking at. Just to orient you, here's Crow Creek Road here. You would have, I'm sorry, like PB High School would be to the east. I'm sorry, Pleasant View would be to the east, excuse me. We've already gone through a zoning, but just to remind you, we have a future land use plan and a zoning that are aligned and the uses aligned so that Neighborhood Light does allow for R2 residential and also allows for the subdivision, obviously, use to come in. The preliminary plat really has a lot of topography that they had to deal with with this. When you saw that plowed farm field, that was all the, the flat ground. And then the woods on each side are basically hillsides going down to creeks on either side. So aptly named Ridge Haven. So this, this flat ridge is where all the subdivision homes will be with kind of a walkout style orientation to the lots. We're going to retain water in three locations, both top corner and then down here in the south as well. One road comes in. Future connectivity will be to the north as the subdivisions keep developing. But at this point, the 25, 27 lots don't require dual access. We do have a couple of outlets that are worth noting. Outlet J would be sold with Lot 25. That's a requirement of the plat. And Outlet A is just held for, for sale, probably to an adjacent landowner from this neighboring subdivision, not a develop a lot. Will never have a structure on it. We had a positive staff report that's part of the record in your packet, and we also had a planning zoning commission meeting, which approved the preliminary plat on April 6th, 2025, April 16th, 2025. Be happy to answer your questions.
Questions for Mark? Greg Jaeger?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mark, I understand this is a preliminary plat. And in that context, the council's role is to consider and decide and not merely to rubber stamp. I was disappointed to see in the Sunday Quad City Times that this subdivision is already being marketed before the council's even had an opportunity to consider and decide. But as it relates to the preliminary plat, I'm curious why we didn't require a hammerhead for the subdivision in that if it's not going to be extended for an indefinite future, a hammerhead gives our vehicles a better opportunity to turn. And then I'd also like you to comment a little bit on why we decided not to extend Pigeon Creek Trail to this subdivision, providing ultimately an additional access point.
Sure. So the hammerhead, that, that turning movement or that backing up and moving of city vehicles will be handled on those driveways. So we'll put the reinforced driveways in on that location. The landowner does not own, or the supervisor does not own the land to the north, so he couldn't put the, the hammerhead there.
He could do it in lieu of the top two lots.
You could, yep. And typically, what we've done is allowed him to do a reinforced driveway and use that as a turning movement for our trucks. Pigeon Trail, let me get to near map for you so I can have road maps. So Pigeon Creek Trail is actually blocked. We don't have right of way, and we don't have ownership willing to sell in that location. That happened probably seven, eight years ago, I would think. But because of the size of the subdivision, we're going to be okay connecting at Winfield Court to the north when we have future development.
How many lots do you envision going to the north?
I can't tell you for sure. But this is 25, maybe a few less with the steep terrain in the wooded area, but probably another 25 or 30. Hard to lay it out in my mind.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. My first question is, who owns the retaining wall along Crow Creek, Crow Creek Road?
It's my understanding that's a city-owned wall.
So then the city is responsible for maintenance of that?
I believe so, yeah.
So we take care of maintenance on the sidewalk then too?
I don't think we do that sidewalk. I don't know if we do that sidewalk or not, do we?
We do, okay. Thank you, that was my question.
Other questions? All right, then I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's agenda is Consent L. All those in favor? Any opposed? We'll take it, okay. 6, 1, I think Mike, Nick was 4, to leave on consent. Do you want to move it to the regular agenda?
I'm fine saying my piece and being done with it, Your Honor.
Okay. Let's move to Consent M. Mark, you have this one as well.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Case 2519, another preliminary plat, also associated with rezoning, but also in our newest area of town. So this is our newest annexation. Blackstone addition is the, the name of the proposed subdivision. So you'll notice Criswell Street here, we just annexed in March, I would say officially. This, this roughly 80 some acres to the west was already part of the city. But this is all new annexed ground. The part that's coming in for preliminary plat is just this piece that's highlighted in the kind of the green color. This would be an 85 lot residential subdivision, kind of in the south portion, below this creek line to the south, and then a commercial piece up to the north along the interstate. Again, just to make the point, the preliminary plat does not approve any development prior to the rezoning. You have the rezoning case for which we're setting the public hearing for tonight for the next meeting. A little more interesting future land use map here to take a look at. And the zoning that's coming forth will match this. So Neighborhood Light will be rezoned to R2. Community Commercial will be zoned to C3. Those are aligned and allowable rezonings. And then the uses that are proposed are also aligned and allowable. Just to show you what that rezoning would look like on, on paper, if you will. Here, the blue is all R2. That's where you're going to see the residential subdivision of the preliminary plat we're about to look at. And then you'll see the small commercial lot or mid-sized commercial lot to the north along Interstate 80. So about 85 residential lots, going to show you in two pieces. So start with the south half, Forest Grove Road is to the south. Just coming up, mid-sized R2 lots. We will have phased construction, so we'll start on the south. The facility of that construction will require this road to be open and accessible during the construction process.
Does the south of that line up with Criswell?
It's not a direct alignment with Criswell at this time. Future alignment could come through the formation of a roundabout, which is likely to happen in the future, but right now it doesn't. We're okay with the alignment, given the offset. We'll still allow for left-hand turning movements since the, the new road is to the right, if you will, of the existing Criswell road. So you won't have huge turning movement problems. And then we may be able to address that with a future intersection at Criswell and Forest Grove that might be a roundabout. Moving up to the north, a couple of things worth pointing out here. Lot 50, that's where our lift station will be, or is. So Lot 50 is our lift station. Outlet F, that's all floodplain, not going to be doing much in there. Just a little bit of, maybe just on the periphery. Of course, anything that was done in the floodplain would have to meet our ordinance to have floodplain permits. And then to the north, Lot 51 is that commercial lot accessed in this location. And that'll probably primarily be used for like convenience-type storage. We do have a positive staff report that's part of the record in your packet. And the Planning and Zoning Commission didn't recommend for approval on April 16th, 2025. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
How close are those two streets? Criswell and whatever the one is, I mean, that seems to me to be an issue.
The distance, I could measure it for you real quick.
Because you're going to be, people are going to be jogging over from Criswell, and people are going to, you know, that, that seems like it.
It's a fair point. We spent some time talking about that and came to the conclusion, if I could get my computer to work, that we thought the offset would be okay. I would have to guess, I think that road is right about here.
Reed, what do you think? It's further?
Further to the east. It's almost on the school property.
Okay.
The old school house property, yeah. Closer to there.
We went centerline over. That's 175, centerline to centerline. I'm guessing.
Yeah, yeah, I see what you're doing.
I don't have the drawing in front of me, but 165, 170, centerline to centerline. And we talked with Brent at length about this during the Planning and Zoning Commission. And he did mention that, that offset to the right was more conducive to the left-hand turning movements. You know, if you had it offset to, towards the Blunk Farm, if you will, where you can see the driveway, those left-hand turning movements that conflict, this, we have less.
Other questions? Go ahead, Mark. Would you, did you have more? No.
No, I'm happy to answer your questions that you may have.
Any questions? Yes, Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. So access to the commercial portion?
Yeah.
What's the access to that?
Let me show you on near map or this county website. It's a little easier to see, I think, than all the line part on that other one. If I can get this to go away. There's kind of a field drive there. Let me find it. There it is. So it's roughly the same location of this field drive. So it's a good distance. Again, I can throw a quick measurement on here. But it's past the creek. If you want to go from the creek, you're going to be, just that distance is going to be.
So the developer will be putting in a proper road?
Yeah, yeah, it'll curb cut. It'll be a curb cut. It won't be any right of way up on that part.
Okay. Because I assume that's the same road that we have to use to get to the lift station?
No, actually, no. We have an easement for the lift station. So that is, that's already on, already in place and on the plan. I can show you that.
Yeah, it's there.
So here's your, here's your lift station access easement. Sorry, I should have pointed it out to you earlier.
Okay.
So we have access to our lift station.
Other questions? Okay, then let's entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's consent agenda as Item M.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay, let's move to Consent N, as in Nancy. Mark, you have the floor.
I was trying to close the county website and close my presentation. Sorry about that.
That's all right. After all, my friend, you are human.
Yes, my wife will tell you how human I am.
Don't get flustered by that remark.
Okay, Case 25015, 3346 Town Point Drive. It's a site development plan, just north of us on Devil's Glen Road. Kind of an infill project. You're looking at Everest Homes, Mr. Rad Pandit, planning a multi, we're going to call it multi-family dwelling unit. They're town home style. Technically, it's one lot of record, so they're considered multi-family. But, you know, to the common eye, it's going to be town home style. Our zoning and future land use, of course, are aligned. And we do like the fact that we're expanding housing choices in the city of Bettendorf. And that does align also with our comprehensive plan. C2 zoning, that is what allows the multi-family to come in. Going to do four buildings, I think six in each, except one will have seven. The parking in the center. You'll have a city sewer in, down the middle. That'll be a requirement because of the number of lots here. We don't want a private line. We want to make that a, a city line, which the developer has agreed to. Plenty of parking spaces with the garages and the parking in front as well. I think they have 100 parking spaces, and by code, they'd only need 50. We will have some on this, the true right of way, the true public right of way is Town Point Drive. You will have a sidewalk there as well with an ADA pad and then a connection to a new ADA pad that'll be installed just across the street in the city right of way. Town Point Center is not private, is private only, so we won't have sidewalks there on that, on that private drive. Six tree factors, relatively small site. Got a couple in the drive lane area, the parking area, and a few scattered around the site with all the easements in the small lot. There's not a lot to do here. There's your elevations, again, town home style. So two-car garages on the bottom, normal front door entry on the other side. Technically, 34 units could have been squeezed onto this lot. The developer chose to go with 25 to allow for the parking and turning movements and snow storage and things of that nature. We did have a positive staff recommendation, a couple of conditions. I mentioned the ADA sidewalk pads. There is a utility easement that just needs to be abandoned. It was there, but is no longer necessary. We're going to have them take that off for their final plat. And then a sanitary sewer, like we talked about, main line running through the site because of the number of, of units. We want to have that via city sewer line. We did have a positive staff report and a recommendation for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission on April 16th. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Questions? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm concerned that the street up there, what is it, Town Point Center? That there's no sidewalk along it. At the same time, the council letter indicated that possibly we're looking to convert that to a city street?
I think, fair point. So Town Point Center is a private drive, and that's how the subdivision was built 10, 15 years ago, maybe longer than that. Probably wouldn't be our choice if we were building the subdivision now. We'd certainly want to have right of way throughout. So maybe it's a lesson learned for the city. Probably going to be hard to squeeze sidewalk out of them. They do have a service walk, you know, private service walks are not technically sidewalks on the north side of Town Point Drive. You'd, you'd be squeezing these lots really narrowly if you tried to take right of way out of them. And I know we're meeting actively with the property owners. There's five or six involved in this development. And they're working on a way to bring the road up to a decent standard for the city to potentially take ownership of. Now, that's still something we're working on, but we're hopeful we can get that done.
And then for fire, for fire protection, what's our code regarding requirement for sprinklers?
For sprinklers? So at, at the fifth unit, they're sprinkled now? So more than four in a row, you're sprinkled. Did I say that right, Chief?
So all of these units will be sprinkled then?
Yes, sir.
According to that drawing, yes.
Yep, okay. Thank you.
Okay, then let's entertain a motion that this remain on consent tomorrow as N.
So moved.
All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, let's move to the remaining consent agenda items. Any particular council member have a question or a thought on any of those? Yes, Greg Jaeger?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple of items I'd like to talk about briefly. If there's other council members who want to go first, I'm glad to defer.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. If we look at Consent J, which is the award for professional services for Middle Road funded design project. The council letter indicates that the total project is $2.1 million landscaping and other improvements. The council letter indicates that the total project is two-point-one million dollars landscaping and other improvements, as well as paying for these design services. I guess my first question, the overriding question, is this, is this two-point-one million dollar project, in addition to the council commitments for the pedestrian bridge in the area? Or is this to be funded out of that, that pedestrian bridge project?
Jason, Jeff, Doctor, who wants this?
This, this two-point-one million is part of the currently budgeted pedestrian bridge project.
And the total amount for that project again?
I believe eleven-point-six.
Okay. So when we talk about the, the bridge, we really, it's sort of a misnomer if we say it's eleven million dollars for the bridge. It's going to be less than that with the sizable amount being done for landscaping and such as you do the entryway into the city. This is the same professional services vendor for the design of the bridge as well as the, this portion of it?
That's correct.
And why didn't we simply have that contract initially include this portion?
I believe that we did not have that initially put into that portion because we did not know how the DOT was going to design that particular section north of Interstate eighty and how it was going to tie into the interchange design, working with the DOT.
So if the DOT had taken over more of the project to what would be the south, we would have had less need for design by this professional and we would have incurred less cost.
Well, that is correct, but yet also keep in mind that the HDR on this particular contract is going to be designing the landscape component of that, which is the responsibility of the city. So that once those plans are designed, then they're going to turn those over to the DOT to include in their overall bid package when the bridge goes out to bid.
Okay.
The I-eighty and Middle, Middle Road interchange goes out to bid.
Okay. So this, this portion of work is going to be for putting together bid specs that the DOT is going to let, but we are going to pay for?
It's a component piece of that, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. Your Honor, that was my only question on that one. Consent F, where we are asked to approve contract and bond for twenty-twenty-five full-depth patching program. I don't mean this as any knock on staff or the work that staff does. The budget on this was a million dollars. The bid award was about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars less than a million dollars. And staff is asking us to expand the program so that we expend all of the one million dollars. I have perhaps been overly aggressive in trying to remind the council on the total debt that the city has. And it seems to me that there are opportunities from time to time to take the win and move forward. We've got a, we had a scope of work that we wanted to get done. We had a bid that came back at less than budget. And so we now have the opportunity to have a hundred thousand dollars that we could set aside for a future project next year to help reduce the need to bond next year. I understand we have good people. I understand these are good projects. If we give good people more money to do good projects, we will get more good. So it's not a question of this being a bad request by staff. To me, this is a question of, should we expand the project because we got a good bid? Or should we be concerned about the overall debt capacity and expenditures of the city? Personally, I think on this one, I lean more towards, let's keep the money and save it for another project next year. But I'm willing to be swayed by the council. I'd like to have that discussion.
Do you want to remove this from consent for tomorrow?
I'm willing to have the discussion right now, Your Honor. I'm, whatever the council's, if I'm lone wolf on this, just like the other one. It frustrates me when a developer puts something in the paper before we've considered it. But if the council says, ah, no harm, no foul, I can live with that.
Brian, would you like to address Greg's thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, he has great thoughts and we've discussed this previously before.
You don't have to say that just because I'm here.
He has great thoughts, seriously. But, you know, and this is a part of the overarching discussions that we've had with this and, and previous budget sessions and even during goal setting last year, back in October. But we also have to be cognizant of the fact that this particular patching program is an integral part of our overall pavement management system. If we have a project that actually came in a little bit lower, which it did in this case under the full-depth patch program, we're able to get more patches done. If council chooses not to award it, that's fine. We can use that money elsewhere. But like I said, patching is a, is a huge asset for the city in doing full-depth patches in residential neighborhoods, which is going to basically prolong the life of a particular residential street, which can extend the life of it before we actually have to go back in and do a full entire reconstruction of that street, which is going to cost a significantly lot more money than that. So I think by, by allowing us to use, like in the, in this particular patching program, we can extend the life of these pavements a little bit longer, keep the can down the road and, and hold them back off some of those larger costs down, you know, just, just like crack sealing. Jerry's always talking about crack sealing. By actually sealing those cracks up as what we do first and foremost, and then we do patching and then we do full reconstruction and things like that. So I think if we had a larger reconstruction project that came in a significantly lot less, that would be a great opportunity. But in a patching program, I have to disagree that not extending this program out, that we would not get a bigger, better bang for our buck by not extending this particular program. We're just able to get more square yards done this particular year by extending the program. Who, who knows that next year, that the prices come in super high and then we're cutting the program? So I mean.
I don't disagree with anything Mr. Schmidt has said. As I said, this is a good program. To use his logic and knowing that we have millions of dollars of unencumbered funds in the general fund balance, we should perhaps increase the award not to a million dollars, but to two million dollars so that we cover even more streets. I think it's incumbent upon the council to make the decision as to what the appropriate funding level should be. I appreciate that Brian wants to do the best he can. And, and I agree with him that spending the money for this helps those streets. I'm not arguing anything on that other than where's the right balance?
Yep.
And that's, this is small money in terms of a hundred thousand versus a hundred and thirty-five million. Small. But where do you start unless when you find an opportunity, you take it?
Did you have any one?
I, I think that this really is a policy decision for the council to discuss. I mean, I, we will do the best we can with the dollars that are allotted to us. And I think Greg is making a point that this is a council discussion, not really a staff discussion. So we'll look for direction here.
Understood. And we've talked about the amount being placed in these buckets like this program and others each year. Like if we need this much or if alleys need to get done, do we reapportion? More of a policy discussion on how we do those things. Jerry, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I think I look at it on a project by project basis, or at least a program by program basis. In this case, we're going to have another project for patching next year. And so if we do extra patching this year, the potentials there that Public Works would have a smaller project next year for patching because it got done this year. And the other thing I look at it is, and Brian made this point, which is the prices were obviously good. The fact that we ended up with a bid smaller than the engineer's estimate, we got good prices. So when we have good prices, I think we should take advantage of it and, and do the work.
Anybody else? Yes, Lisa?
I'm in agreement with Jerry and I think the number one thing that we hear or I hear is the patching. So I think we've got the money to do that, so.
Greg Adamson, any thoughts?
I'm concerned about the debt. I wish that there was a way to bring that down more quickly. While the bids are, we, we've, we've spent a lot of money over the years because the interest rates were low and the bids were good and, and took on debt on purpose to get that, to get that done. I, I wish I had the answer. I'd be, I'd be famous, but. If the bids are, I, I don't know. I defer to.
I defer to. Wisdom of the council.
To the wisdom of the council.
Frank, any thoughts?
Brian, if I remember right, it seems like now it's not a problem, but long about September, October, you usually have some little surprises that crop up on you and you don't have them budgeted. Would this allow you to take care of some of those rather than trying to push them off a year and the, the problem increasing in size?
One of the things we do is we, we have already identified which patches we were going to do. And, you know, and that's when, that's what we went out to bid on. Now that the price is, is lower than we anticipated, if we were offered that money, we would obviously hold back some of that monies and, and once those patches would pop up, sometimes maybe a higher priority patch might show up. And one of the things that we just noticed was the intersection of Falcon and Fifty-third. That particular intersection right there is starting to see significant pavement deterioration. So we, we are doing patches on Fifty-third, but now if we did receive this additional funding, we would actually expand that patching to include that, that particular intersection. Going back to Mr. Jaeger's point, it's been a little while since we've actually, since engineering and Public Works as a whole came to, in front of counseling and updated you on our pavement management system. We can show you, we actually have our streets going to be driven this year by Sea Tree. And then we will be getting that information and we can maybe come forward to you and show you where we're at pavement condition-wise and where the needs are in the city across the board and kind of show you and put, put some estimated dollars to those needs. And that might help you guys make a decision as we move into goal setting this October of a direction you guys might want to land on with the debt.
Scott, did you have any thoughts?
Sure, thank you, Your Honor. I think with.
Come to you next, Nick.
Particularly in the, in the second ward, first ward, parts of the third ward where we have aging infrastructure. I mean, those, those, many of those streets have been well past end of life. And I think you've done an amazing job since you've been here. You've reevaluated the way we repair our roads. And you just need to drive through a neighboring community and see, you can vividly see and feel the difference. And I look at roads and infrastructure, maybe there's an analogy of like hungry people, right? If you can, if you had budgeted a million dollars to feed people and you happen to get a better deal on the food, you, you had eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, but you fed the, the number you thought you'd feed with a million, do you let the others go hungry? You can just do more. You feed more. And I love that that's the way you're looking at these roads is even the million doesn't get everything covered, but it's a process and one that you're judiciously reviewing. And I think previously the council had given direction that you had that latitude and the flexibility to manage that program. So I think that's, again, I would agree with Jerry and Lisa and others that the thing is on the right track and we're super proud of the way you're doing it, so.
Well, thank you. I think that it would be a good time to sit there and introduce another update of our overall pavement management system. And then we can actually show you as a council where we're at against, with all of our roads as a whole, against other cities in Iowa, because it is a statewide program. And we can get their PCI data or just a summary of it and show you where we're at. And that's a decision that you guys have to make as far as the policy goes, if you want to lower that amount or increase it.
Yeah, and to Councilmember Jaeger's point, that might be really helpful. As I remember the, you know, over the past few years, we would get that, I think it was a cup, every couple of years, hey, here's the PCI, these are the roads that are really in the worst shape. This is where we're at. So it gives a bigger picture of the health and wellness of the roads and what the needs are. I mean, that makes sense. So thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
You bet. Nick, any thoughts?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I would, I would echo similar to what Councilmember Nauman just stated there. It would be helpful to have more data because I don't, I don't suspect that roads that are in need of repair just sort of pop up on our radar randomly. We probably have a pretty good understanding and, and plan, right, as it comes to deploying these funds. So, you know, as Brian, you sta, you stated that, you know, as, as new, new needs, you know, develop or show, show themselves throughout the year, you know, I guess I'm struggling to understand, you know, how does, how does that process work from something that is, hey, it's on our radar, we know about it, to, you know, what are some of those events that have to occur for it to jump to the top of the list and, you know, in a matter of three or four months, right, in priority? So I think, you know, being able to get a, a better data set on, you know, understanding where we sit as a whole, understanding the whole program. I don't disagree with Councilmember Jaeger on his thoughts of, you know, we, we got to be physically responsible. So those would be my thoughts.
All right. Well, thank you all for your thoughts. This is currently on the consent agenda for tomorrow night. Does anybody wish to remove it there from?
I learned my lesson, Your Honor. I have one more item.
Okay, yes, sir.
Toilets at the golf course. The council, the council letter indicates that as a result of the council action tonight, tomorrow night, golfers can't expect that they would have to go no more than three holes without having access to a restroom facility. Is that the standard that we want to hold the city to? Is that you should have a restroom every three holes? It seems to me like, you know, this is another one's three-hundred-thousand dollars. It's been on the CIP. Council had the opportunity to talk about it. Apparently there were no objections, but I'm raising it. So again, I'll go, I'll abide by the will of the council.
Do you want restrooms more?
I, well, I would say, you know, I play golf a lot and so I play at a lot of different courses. I don't know very many courses that have restrooms, restroom access. Excuse me. Every three holes. And, you know, God bless us for wanting to be the premier city.
Your Honor, if I might.
You may.
The purpose of the council letter was to maybe accentuate that, that availability would be to occur. But the, the issue that we've come up with is both of the restrooms that we currently have on the course and two porta potties are all without pot, without water and without electricity. And now they're just holes in the ground with a brick wall around them. We have for some time been talking about trying to replace these with more permanent facilities that would have running water, electricity and perhaps be more of a comfort station like we've seen at Tangled Wood outside and we've seen at, at say, something like the John Deere Classic, where it's an upgrade. Our thought was we were going to have to replace those two current hole-in-the-ground restrooms. Maybe we accentuated it poorly by saying it was available every three holes. That was maybe, that wasn't the desire. That's the way that they're positioned. But the more important part was that we were going to get running water, electricity so that it was more modern than just an outhouse. And so that was the, that was the thought process. And we've been driving towards that solution. Trying to put permanent facilities in would require us at the current locations to seek water through the golf course from Iowa American, either on Middle Road or through one of the yards, the golf course, and would be very expensive. We felt this was a more economical ability to do that. And we can put them now close to the existing sewer system that runs, the mains that run through the crickway, through the, through the golf course are the mains that we have for the rest of the city. We can create a manhole very close to that sewer and now make these versus pumping them out, they go directly into our sewer system. So we thought those upgrades were valuable and the timing was right. So, but again, if the council perceives that this is an expense it doesn't believe we should make, we'll stay with porta potties if, if that's the direction we get. And I don't know if John wants to say something.
Yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. Decker, to, to Decker's point, the, the point of saying there is going to be access every three holes wasn't to, you know, put in a, a ton of bathroom facilities out there. The layout of our course loops back on itself multiple times, which allows, you know, multiple access to the, to the same restrooms. In addition, the, I did want to mention, there was $180,000 budgeted. We are right on target to be within that budget. So we're, we're not anticipating going over the $180,000 that was set aside for these restroom facilities. If, to Decker's point, if the council would want to go a different direction, we, we could go back to porta potties. I think this would be one of the single largest upgrades we can make to our, our golf course, which is in beautiful shape, it plays well, it's one of the, the best in, in the state. And restroom facilities are one of the one complaints that we, that we still hear to this day.
Anybody else? Frank?
Just a quick question. Restrooms are a vandalism problem for us already. Would these be locked up by the people at the golf course overnight?
Yes, we're actually putting on automatic, the, the proposed bid here, we would include automatic locks. So similar to our park system, they would lock automatically at 9:10 PM, whatever time we, we allocate for that.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to be heard? Greg, Adamson?
Thank you, sir. So is, are these, are there two of them?
Three.
Three of them?
There's a total of three.
Are these in, in replacing the two holes in the ground and the porta potties?
Correct.
Okay, so, okay, so it's just those three and that would be.
Correct.
Or strategically placed?
More strategically placed, but it would replace having to pay for porta potties and holes in the ground.
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else on this topic? It's on consent, is it, whoop, go ahead, Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. So are these documented in our financial documents as equipment since they're on wheels? Or are they depreciated? And the golf course, the golf fund pays the depreciation?
Yeah, so these would be considered capital equipment of some type and, and capitalized in the enterprise fund. So from an accounting standpoint, you know, we, we pay for them upfront with cash, but they are expensed over the life of that, of that asset through depreciation, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? Yes, Greg Jaeger?
Finally, Your Honor. In the Mayor and Council Department Risk Management Funds, I see two payments this time. One to Prestige Auto Body, one to Walcott Collision. One is for damage repair to bus 2411. The other is damage repair to bus 2414. Have we had a couple of bus accidents over the last month or so that would generate these repairs?
I can take that, yes, we did have two accidents and that information is also going to be subrogated to the two individuals that had caused the damage. So we took the time to fix the vehicles accordingly and that information is going to be submitted back to the insurance company for reimbursement.
So we assume that our drivers were not at fault then?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on consent? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion that all items on the consent that tend to be taken on consent tomorrow night.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Sure, why not?
I'm not sure who I got.
Okay, who moved?
I think it was Frank.
How many, three of you moved? And who gave us a second?
I'm not sure who got the second.
Second?
Anybody.
Okay, Frank got the second.
I got Frank as the first.
I got Frank as first. We'll put Adamson as second.
Okay, well Frank's the second, so let's figure out who made the motion.
Frank is first, Adamson is second.
That's not what happened. Frank is the second.
I had Frank as a first.
Okay, but he's not.
Okay.
He just told you he was the second.
I'm the second.
Who, who, who moved?
There were four firsts.
There's about four firsts. Adamson is fine.
I moved a little just to be.
Criminy. All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, we'll take up the consent agenda as written for our night at our regular meeting. Let's take a look at the items to appear. Any questions or thoughts on those before we have our meeting tomorrow night? And hearing none, let's move to any items that you may have that might be added to the agenda. I don't have any. No items added, then let's entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
All right, we stand adjourned. Good work, people, 7 o'clock tomorrow evening.